Good morning. Welcome to the Alabama State Board of Education meeting this Thursday, August 10th, 2023. The time is 10:00 a.m. And I would like to invite Bishop Yvonne Jones of Covenant Ministries International, Montgomery, Alabama, to the podium to pray, and then we will have our Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, all. To the President of the Board, the Honorable Governor Kay Ivey, in her absence, to the Superintendent of Education, Dr. Eric Mackey, and to the other seated individuals on the board. Again, good morning. It is truly an honor to stand before you this morning and pray for our state leaders of Alabama. I want to pray the wisdom of God over you, because certainly we're in a time when we need wisdom. And I thank God that you have been selected to authorize educational policies here in the state of Alabama, K through 12. There's a scripture that came to mind when I was thinking about you all yesterday, and I want to read that scripture real quick. It's out of First Kings, Chapter 4, verse 29 through 30. "God gave Solomon wisdom and very great insight and a breadth of understanding as measureless as the sand on the seashore. Solomon's wisdom was greater than the wisdom of all the people of the East and greater than all the wisdom of Egypt." I want us to understand that no matter what situation we're in, God has given you the wisdom to rectify the problem. Can we bow our heads? Father, I want to thank you again for the opportunity to pray for this board, the Board of Education. We lift them up before you. You have entrusted them with the competence to make sound and fair decisions for our children's education here in the state of Alabama. I ask you to continue to give them wisdom as they are seated in places of authority. And please, Father, give them wisdom on every difficult issue they may encounter. Father, I pray that you would give this board the clarity to know what issues are most important and what issues might require more dedicated time. We ask that you will continue to give them wisdom in all policy, structure, and guidelines necessary to strengthen the competence of our school body. Continue to fill these board members with compassion, discernment, and wisdom as they navigate Alabama to greater heights in the educational arena. Never let them forget their mandate to serve. And may this board continue to be faithful, informed, and thoughtful when establishing state educational policies and regulations. Again, we ask, Father, for the wisdom and righteousness to be evident in all that they do. We ask all of this in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you so much. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Thorington, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Bell?
Present.
Dr. Chestnut?
Present.
Governor Ivey? Mrs. Manning?
Present.
Mrs. McRae?
Present.
Dr. Reynolds? Dr. Richardson?
Present.
Mrs. West?
Here.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Here.
We have a call.
Perfect. We will now consider motion to approve the agenda for the August 10th, 2023 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. We'll now consider motion to approve the minutes from the July 11th, 2023 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, like sign?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Thorington, has anyone signed up to speak today?
No, ma'am. There are no public speakers.
Okay, perfect. Is there any unfinished business?
There's no unfinished business.
Okay. We will now consider a resolution related to the intervention of Sumter County, the Sumter County School System. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I believe we may have some discussion.
Yes, I do have several questions I want to ask.
Please proceed, Dr. Chestnut.
Thank you. I understand that the majority of the board members of Sumter County have agreed to receive the support that we are offering through intervention. But I have a couple of questions I want you to just clarify for me, Dr. Mackey. The first one is, how will this intervene and support impact personnel in Sumter County?
Yes, ma'am. I'd be glad to. And thanks for the question. Let me go back and just reiterate, you're correct. So that after we, as this process has gone on, we sent an initial letter to the board in Sumter County, had a follow-up Zoom call with them, to which all of them, I think, attended that meeting. They had another meeting two days later then, which is public record, that they voted four to zero to participate, to basically accede to the intervention. Otherwise, you would have found this morning, we'd have actually, would have been set up like a hearing. They would have had a chance to come and bring a legal case while they shouldn't be taken over, but they voted to accede to the intervention. They did vote four to zero, too. The board members did not come to that meeting. So that, since then, we've had multiple conversations with their superintendent and a few of the board members. You asked, though, about personnel. So be clear, it's not our intention to go in and cut a lot of personnel, or at this point, even to cut any personnel. Certainly, one of the things we'll do, once we appoint a chief administrative officer, which is in the resolution, that person will work with Dr. Burrows to really look at the on-the-ground situation. And at the end of the year, there is no question, we might need to reorganize some of their positions. And I would say that openly, because one of the reasons we're very concerned is that they have a lot of employees, they've added a lot of employees, not a bad thing, during this COVID time using federal funds. But those federal funds will disappear in about 13 months, and so we will have to help them develop a plan how to step off of those funds. And if there are not enough local and state funds, then obviously, there may be some positions that we'd have to consolidate. We'll certainly look at filling those through attrition and those kinds of things. But we don't have any plan to go in and make major personnel changes at this time. We will, if I may go just a little bit deeper. So I think it's well-known now, publicly known, that the Sumter County Board was unable to reach agreement on adopting the agenda for a meeting two days ago. So they did not have enough teachers to start school. And in conversation with the superintendent, she and I felt it best that they just delay until next week. And so this afternoon, after our work session, I've already been talking with them this morning, this afternoon, we'll be working on hiring those people. So once, and if the board approves this resolution, then I would have the authority to make those hires myself. So it'd actually be the opposite. We're actually adding people, not cutting people for the Sumter County Schools.
I have, oh, if you have another question, I'm sorry.
I do, but you can go on.
No, I just wanted to, I know you mentioned.
Your microphone, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I know you mentioned the chief academic officer, the framework as to how it will look for people with the intervention. Can you explain that?
Yes, ma'am. Glad to. So we will appoint a chief academic officer, chief, excuse me, chief administrative officer, CAO. And that person will, on a day-to-day basis, and I will tell you, that person has already been, on a day-to-day basis, working with Dr. Burrows now for two or three weeks, because we've, you know, we felt like we couldn't just wait. We had to give her some support. But he'll be even more engaged. Ultimately, we'll, I'm sure we'll provide more people, too. So we're going to have to, once we get in a little deeper, we're going to have to find out, do we need to send ARI support, more support in? Do we need to do some professional development around teachers? I've already had a meeting with the Alabama Association of School Boards about some amended board training for their board. Those things will play out over the next several weeks and months. But the person running all that will be the chief administrative officer, who is a retired superintendent. And I'm not sure if I should name until the resolution passes.
No. And I guess what I'm asking, I know in the past, I think somewhere maybe around 1985, someone was telling me, or 1989, Sumter County was taken over at that point. And there was a framework that was utilized, and I think with some of the other takeovers, with Birmingham and Montgomery. So that's why I was asking, is that framework perhaps going to be used, well, after you go in and you look at ARI and all of that, to determine if there are other people beyond those persons who might be needed?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering.
It could be, this, I believe this is the third time Sumter County has been intervened since the, the first was in, I believe, 1973. And so, you know, we'll, just things have changed a lot in Sumter County since then. They have about half the student population they had 20 years ago, less than half the student population. The county is about two-thirds the population it was 20 years ago, so there's a lot fewer resources. The last time the state was significantly involved was not actually intervention, but the state, as you remember, negotiated a deal to sell the old Sumter County High School to the university and use the proceeds to build a new high school. One of their big challenges right now is facilities, not necessarily that building, because that building's, I'll say, about 15 years old, but they have other facility issues. So we'll look at some of those older things, but probably.
And when I say older things, I'm not talking about the issues then, but just the framework and the processes. That's what I meant.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll look back at some of those, some of those.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I do have another question. What impact will this have on the financial stability of Sumter County Schools?
Yes, ma'am. So one of the things, obviously, that we have to look at is this step down from their federal funding, because Sumter County, and I would like to make a point here, they're not the only county, but many of our, especially rural counties, are using a lot of federal funds right now. Remember that the total ESSER dollars is about equal to 20% of all the money the state puts into education. And that money will go away in, again, about 13 months. So, so one, we want to help them with a step-down plan. Two things, basically, on the ESSER funds. One is to spend the rest of it, because they have a significant amount of money left, to spend it efficiently, so that they're, they get long-term good out of the investment. But then also, to make sure that things like personnel, there's a way to step down. Sumter County, one of the reasons that, of course, we've been engaged with them for some time on multiple issues, but one of the things that brought this to a head is they were unable to get a clear audit from the Department of Public Examiners this year, because examiners could not complete their audit because their books were so far behind. So I actually appointed a person to go in and take over their bookkeeping several weeks ago, before this resolution even came to the board. And then the deeper we dug, the more layers of that onion we peeled back, the more we realized we needed to, we were going to have to go all the way. But we are, we do have somebody in there now, and we feel like we'll be able to get them a, hopefully get their financials approved on time, maybe not on time, because they'd be September 15th, but hopefully on time, get their bills paid. They had several bills that were many months behind, so they couldn't really tell how much money they had, because they didn't know how much had been committed. So get their bills paid up to date, get their financials done, and then bring the examiners back in to complete an audit. If they don't have a complete audit, and clear, complete and clear audit, then they're in danger of losing their Title I funds, and we can't let that happen. That's, again, one of the reasons that I'm asking you to intervene, because we have to get the books straight, so we can complete, so the examiners can complete the audit. We have been asked, I've already gotten calls, in fact, the last call before I walked down here was from a parent in Sumter County, but about whether the state would bring a lot of money, could we build them a new school? And, of course, we don't have the funds to build them a school. We will look at the capacity they have. They do have some excess bond capacity, so they could borrow money, but I don't want to make them borrow themselves into debt that would be difficult to pay five, 10 years from now. So we'll, we'll look at all of that, but don't want to make any commitments about those things right now.
Okay. One last question. What can the parents and the community expect in regards to their involvement and how they can be informed of what's going on during this time?
Yes, ma'am. So the superintendent Burrows has done a good job communicating with parents this past week, especially, obviously, she had to send out a message yesterday that everybody seemed to receive, but nobody liked, and that was that school had to be delayed. But they do have a good communication system with parents. We'll, we'll continue to work through her mostly to communicate, but we will be setting up some town halls. I know they had an overflow crowd at the board meeting that didn't happen a couple of days ago, but within the next few weeks, we'll have some town halls, and I'll work with our CAO on that, so that people don't feel like they're left in the dark. I will be, I already have three days in the next month to, I've cleared my calendar to go to Sumter County, and so we'll be, you know, at some point, I'll go to some of those town halls, too. I don't want them to wait on when it becomes, I'm available to go, but at some point, I will go.
Okay, thank you. I just know it's so important for Sumter County to know that support will be provided so that the students in Sumter County can accomplish and achieve the success that they deserve, and that's my concern.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
As a follow-up to Dr. Richardson's question, and thank you so much, Dr. Chestnut, for your excellent questions as well, so many of what the questions I had actually have been answered, but I do, as a follow-up to Dr. Richardson's question, do we have enough staff to back up the individual named in this particular resolution in order to go in and intervene? I know we can use Selma and some other, Montgomery, for example, more recent interventions. That takes a solid team in order to back up the one individual who will be heading it up. It's not an easy task, and I understand the superintendent has been, just from reading and what you've already shared, has been very helpful and has worked with you, and is a new superintendent, in terms of, what, a year, perhaps, or two?
Actually, two months.
Two months. That's where I got the two. And that certainly is not an easy task for anyone. And also, as we look at the list of those who have been recommended for hiring, so often, when you're looking at more than just financial intervention, the task is not easy when you're looking at personnel who will hopefully help with that support needed in the academic area. And how many students does Sumter County? And what are the age groupings?
Yes, ma'am. So they have about 1,000 students. As I mentioned, I think even when the high school, the new high school was built, they had about 2,500 students. That's from memory. They have about 1,000 students now. They're grouped into four schools. And primarily, y'all may know that one of the recommendations was to move grades six, seven, and eight from Kennerbys to York. And we'll like to, we'll probably, we're going to have to look at that. Kennerbys has had significant structural issues. We, in fact, actually helped them in 2021 to develop a plan to fix some of those structural issues, '21, '22, it's been the last year, but they, anyway, but we're never following through with all of those, so we still have some issues there. Some of them were addressed, the immediate safety concerns, but some of the deeper structural issues are still out there, so we have to deal with that facility. Did you ask about the grade bands? I don't know per grade how many they have, but I think they're pretty evenly distributed, so you'd have about 80 students or so per grade, but I can't say for sure. Some grades may have many, you know, may have more. But they've been losing, of course, population, the county's losing population, and they're losing student population. And they did lose some students to the charter school, when UWA opened the charter school, but that's not where all the bleeding's been. It's just people aren't living there anymore. You asked about the personnel, certainly, I felt, you know, really good, I know everybody does, about the CAO. We're going to have, we do have a person already working with their finances. They have to have a chief school finance officer. At the end of the year, their superintendent, chief school finance officer, and high school principal all resigned, so they, so we now have a high school principal, have a superintendent. And by the way, the board, to compliment the board, they hired one of our school improvement people to be the superintendent, and she was actually working with the school, so she knows that area pretty well. She doesn't live there, but she knows the area. We will bring another person in that's going to work with, our CAO is kind of his assistant, somebody he wanted. We don't have any intention to bring in other people, but I think the rest will be filled in right now from people on our staff. So we have, obviously, regional people over there with both ARI and through the Amstein numeracy. We're already helping them with some career tech stuff, but if we need to bring on additional, we will. I just don't, we don't know yet who that would be, if, you know, do we need another finance person? Is it an elementary person? What do we need to help them with? But we will. And we'll also help them with, we've set aside some emergency funds, legislature gave us for, like, storm cleaning up, for instance. When the school burned in Wilcox County a few years ago, we were able to go into that fund and give them some immediate money after the tornado in Selma. We were able to go in, and we've set aside some of those funds to, so as we uncover structural issues, we can address some of those, especially if there's safety concerns, quickly.
Board members, any other questions? Dr. Mackey, just finally, how many local school board members do we have in Sumter County?
There's six board members in Sumter County.
Okay. And the most recent meeting, how many board members attended that meeting to take action?
They had, two members did not attend, so four attended, two voted against approving the agenda, and two voted to approve the agenda, so the motion failed, and the meeting was adjourned.
And so, based on the decision of that local board, school has been delayed this week?
Yes, ma'am, until Monday.
Okay. I'd like the record to show that the state board certainly is disappointed that school is not opening on time in Sumter County. I remember as a local school board member and as a parent, you're planning and preparing for your children to go to school, and when that is suddenly delayed, it interrupts the family, it interrupts employment. And so I'm certainly very disappointed that they were not able to come together in a way to hire teachers, to put in the classroom, to open school on time.
Agreed.
Board members, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand. Any opposed?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We will now consider a resolution to authorize a review of the educator preparation program at Alabama Agricultural and Mechanical University. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes.
My discussion is not about this particular resolution, but it's about the resolutions of the educational, you know, approval preparation programs. I just wanted it understood, some people have, you know, especially at the beginning of school, you're out and about, and you see many educators and many community and business, and there's some disconnect where they're, they don't understand, a lot of our discussion, homework, deep dive, comes at the work session. So I just, I want everybody to understand, we do not take lightly at all these ed prep programs. The work session ahead of time, the deans or their appropriate designee comes in, we ask some questions, we deep dive, we make sure that everything is aligned, so that our teachers coming to us are well-prepared and all the, you know, little check boxes are done. And especially being on the literacy task force, I am particularly always wanting to be sure that they know of the, besides the numeracy law and the literacy law, that there are components, such as the following of the signs of reading, and that we do not at all approve of the three cueing system. So I just wanted some clarification, that many times, people say, boy, y'all go through the board minute agenda real fast, you don't talk about it. Well, our homework has already been done. We might need to clarify, or we might need to do, you know, a little bit more deep diving, but a lot, most of our work is done on the work session. So I sort of ask you to also listen to our work session as well, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to clarify that all of these B through G are asking for approval to review their programs.
Review, that's right.
Then after going through the review, a recommendation will be approved for us to approve their programs.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, and I've asked Dr. Mackey on each of these, rather than read the entire resolution, to really just name the program in which they are asking for review. So, Dr. Mackey, I'll let you take this.
I'd be glad to. So this first one is, of course, Alabama A&amp;M. All of these, I won't go through this each time, all of these are for the new UTEACH model. Now, some of you, again, as Mrs. Ziegler pointed out, if you followed our work sessions, UTEACH is a model that was developed at the University of Texas in Austin, to take students, college students, who are enrolled in STEM-type programs, so a traditional biology, chemistry, engineering degree, and while they're in school, to also kind of marry them to the College of Education and get an education certification along with their regular diploma, or degree, not diploma. So the legislature last year, in the 20, the last session, '22 session, gave money to the state STEM council to do a grant program for institutions in Alabama that wanted to do this. UAB has already had a program, and we had five other institutions that stepped up and said they wanted to participate, so they are getting money from the STEM council to set up their programming, which we are now reviewing. And so Alabama A&amp;M is proposing to teach undergraduate, so what we call Class B, biology, chemistry, mathematics, and physics through the UTEACH model.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We will now consider a resolution to authorize a review of the educator preparation program at Athens State University. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution or adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Mackey?
Athens State's proposing to do, again, Class B undergraduate biology, chemistry, and mathematics programs.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution to review the educator preparation program at Auburn University.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Mackey?
The Auburn University is planning to teach biology, general science, chemistry, and physics, again, the Class B undergraduate program.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We will now consider a resolution to authorize a review of the educator preparation program at Auburn University, Montgomery.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Dr. Mackey?
AUM has a little longer list. They plan to add undergraduate courses in biology, general science, chemistry, and general science biology, computer science, and mathematics.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Unanimous vote.
We will now consider a resolution to authorize a review of the educator preparation program at the University of South Alabama. Dr., I'm sorry, may I have a motion to adopt?
I, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Dr. Mackey?
And USA also has a little longer list. They plan undergraduate programs in biology, general science, chemistry, physics, and mathematics.
It's been It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Unanimous vote.
We will now consider item G, a resolution to authorize a review of the educator preparation programs at the University of West Alabama.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Mackey?
West Alabama has the longest list, so an undergraduate, again, what we call Class B, they propose biology, general science, computer science, chemistry, and mathematics. But they also propose a master's level program, the alternate master's program in biology, general science, computer science, and mathematics. And that alternate program would be for people who have a STEM degree, not a teaching degree, but a STEM degree, so a degree in mathematics, and want to come back and add, um, add a pro, add a master's degree to their program. So this, they're the only institution that has a master's route.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item H, we will now consider a motion to announce intent to adopt, adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290 dash two dash one dash point zero one pertaining to the annual apportionment of foundation program funds. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
They moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Dr. Mackey, can you just explain?
Yes, ma'am. I would, and I'd like just a minute with this too. So this is the, this is the annual change that occurs because the board has to change the, basically the rules for how we pay school districts to match whatever the legislature just passed in the most previous session. Um, and then most particularly, what people will be interested in is teacher pay raises. So the pay raises to be in effect, so that we can pass the money to the districts, the board has to actually amend the rules to do that, um, and make all that line up. And so they're simple changes, there are no significant changes except to align that. If anybody wants to see the changes, they're certainly welcome to contact our offices, office and see them. Let me remind you of something, though, that's gonna come probably, um, an addition at the October meeting, because these have to, technically, the rules have to lay on the table for the forty-five days. And because the first issuance of, of money, the first warrants we'll pay will be at the end of October, we will probably have an emergency rule in the October meeting to, to ask you to allow us to make the October payment, and then the rule will become permanent in November. It's really just a technical thing that happened this year because the legislature adjourned so late, and so it just takes time to make all those things line up. But just realize you'll actually vote on it three times. This month to announce, next month as an emergency, and the next month as a permanent. Um, but teachers will appreciate all three votes, I'm sure.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous vote.
Our next item, item I, such a pleasure to introduce this, um, today, but we will consider a resolution commending Gabe Marsh, a student at all, at Gunnersville High School in Gunnersville City School System located in State Board District Six as the 2023 recipient of the National High School Spirit of Sports Award. Um, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution? We have a motion and a second. Dr. Mackey, wanted to give you a moment to...
Yes, ma'am. I thank you for the time. So we're actually gonna combine this with the superintendent's report, so I'll, I'll save you guys some time today. We had initially, I wanna, there's a lot of people in the room I wanna give credit to before you vote. Uh, so, but first is Chuck Markham. Mr. Markham represents us as our delegate to the High School Athletic Association, and he went to the national meeting. He knew this story. He actually, um, he is my internet on sports statistics. He knows everything. And, um, he came back and said, we, we have to recognize this young man, and let's, let's highlight him in one of our superintendent's reports. But we knew the board would wanna be, would wanna do a resolution for the young man too, so it's kind of backwards that you're doing the resolution before the superintendent's report. But, um, what I would ask is if you'd adopt the resolution, and then we'll go through the, the next piece. There's not gonna be an executive report, and we'll get the superintendent's report. And then we'll, we'll bring this young man up, um, give him his resolution. Uh, he's got some things he wants to say. Uh, and then I would like to, of course, recognize some other folks. We've got Attorney General Steve Marshall with us today. Uh, I would like to recognize him for a few comments. Uh, Alvin Briggs, the head of the High School Athletic Association's here, I'd like for him to make a few comments too. And he's brought a whole team of folks here with him, and we want to, um, give all of them their time. But I won't, if, we'll go through it as you want to. We can just, we can do it all now and skip the superintendent's report if you want to. That's the only item today, except I have one other announcement that has to go into the record on the superintendent's report, but that's all.
Perfect. Let's vote, and then we'll have that item, and then we'll celebrate Gabe and his accomplishments. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Unanimous vote.
Congratulations, Gabe. Dr. Mackey, your executive?
There, there is no executive report this month.
Okay. I think you did have one and other announcement before we celebrate.
I do. I want to, uh, just announce publicly Stacy Royster. Ms. Royster, you, you know, works with our, exclusively with Power School Implementation. She's not with us today because she's actually in Washington DC with Dr. Killingsworth on some updates, um, for federal programming. But she, last month, won a national award. She was named the Unified Impact Award winner for 2023, um, at a meeting in Florida, and I wanted to make that announcement publicly. I wanted to make it with her here, but she's not, so maybe next month she can join us for that recognition. But, uh, she did win that award last month. And then, of course, the only other thing is to recognize Gabe. Um, so first, again, I wanna re, thank Alvin Briggs, uh, the Executive Director of Alabama High School Athletic Association. He has with him Kim Vickers, Ron Ingram, and Brandon Dean. Uh, Alvin, would you like to say something first, or you wanna, that when I let you come up and speak, we'll bring, you can tell us a little bit about the award itself. We'll bring Gabe up, and then Attorney General Marshall with, with Gabe, please.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Good morning. Uh, thank y'all for having us here. First, I wanna thank you and, uh, the board and Dr. Mackey for what you do for the students of the state of Alabama. You know, you have a, a tremendous job, and we really appreciate what you do and your due diligence. So thank you. Uh, you know, I, I can't say much about Gabe that he won't tell you himself. Uh, and, and that's the great part about him. Uh, I've been fortunate, and I've met a, a lot of, uh, special people, but Gabe is the first extra, or honorary per, person I've ever met. And you, you'll see that, and I think we have a video, uh, that we're gonna show. You'll see that in the video, and you also see it when he speaks. Uh, as I was talking to Attorney General Marshall, he, uh, told me a story of how Gabe taught him something when that Gabe was four years old. Uh, I mean, the fourth grade, not four years old. But, you know, that's the kind of person Gabe. Gabe has no limits. Uh, you might look at him and think he's, he has limits, but he has no limits. Uh, I just, um, m, met his mom, um, when we was in Seattle, and s- such a powerful person, such a strong person, and she doesn't limit Gabe either. And so that's, you know, so you have a family, uh, a mother and father that, that lets the young man be the young man he is, and he's a very powerful young man. Uh, the National Spirit of Sport Award that, that Gabe won at the National Federation is the highest honor that, that is bestowed upon any student, uh, across the nation, and there are fifty state associations. And, uh, it was unanimous, uh, when he won it. Gabe also won, uh, the Brian Jordan Award, the highest honor that any student athlete can win in the state of Alabama. Uh, he was overall winner. Uh, and, and that's where this, this stemmed from. This all stemmed from him winning that award, being a part of that process two years ago. Uh, and he gave, uh, an astounding speech that night, and what you hear from him now and what you hear from him in the video, um, if you have, uh, a dry eye, then you really weren't paying attention, uh, 'cause he, he can really touch you hard. Uh, so thank y'all for recognizing Gabe. Thank y'all for recognizing his mom, and, uh, it is such a great honor for him and, and for the state of Alabama.
Thank you. The video, so the video is next, and we'll cue that up.
From the start of his life, Gabe Marsh was given long odds to overcome. Born without legs and only one arm, Gabe was given up by his biological family at birth. That's when the Marsh family helped set Gabe's life on a different path.
When they called me about him, we usually take special needs children or babies. And when they called me about him, I called my husband at work, and I said, "Well, DHR's called, and there's a special baby that they want us to take." And he said, "Well, what's wrong with him?" And I said, "Well, I'm not gonna tell you. I want you to pray about it." 'Cause I really didn't know that I wanna take the responsibility of this baby. And so the next day, he, he said, "What do you decide?" I said, "Well, I'm going to visit." And he said, "Uh, well, you're gonna bring him home." And I said, "Probably so." And God is so funny, 'cause if we prayed for one girl, we ended up with six girls and four boys that we had adopted. And Gabe was our last child to adopt.
You know, I wouldn't be here without my mom. Honestly, I wouldn't be here. That's how she said, um, my dad did hesitate a while to, uh, to say yes, but my mom already knew what her decision was. And so, uh, you know, it's...
Well, a lot of people say that, that he probably wouldn't have done as well if he wasn't in the Marsh house. But I just treat all my kids the same. We have another child that has Down syndrome, and I treat him just like he's, just like one of the other kids, no different. They discipline, no different. Um, they know what's right and wrong, they know how to act. But, um, Gabe is just another one. We treat him just like, he wants to be treated like everyone else, and we've always treated him that way.
Growing up, knowing that his birth mother gave him up weighed heavily on Gabe, but he's learned to look at that fact differently.
I kinda agree with the idea that, um, they just didn't want me. And I was just, I would, I just, I would just lived in the world having that kind of idea in my head, and it, yeah, it was on my shoulders for a while. And then, um, you know, I just, once I started growing, I finally realized that maybe she gave me up for a better future. And, uh, because she gave me up, it's because I was able to have a family, a family of twelve, a home at Gunnersville, mentors, teachers, friends. I, I am, uh, I'm, I'm a blessed man.
Despite his physical differences, Gabe thrived in the Marsh home. Although Anne's goal of teaching all of her children to swim presented a new challenge for Gabe.
I mean, he would just go to the pool with us and watch the other kids swim, and I did give him swim lessons, you know, 'cause we had bought every flotation I could think of, but none of them worked for him. And, uh, we just had to watch him until he learned to swim, which now he's a big-time swimmer.
They let me on the swim team, but they didn't let me count as a swimmer. And I just, I still showed up for practice. I did everything for them, and they didn't let me become a swimmer. And eventually, they actually did let me become a swimmer. And so my circle, suddenly, I was going against this kid. We were going back and back, and we was neck to neck to each other, going back for our last lap to tag the end of the, um, block. And it, um, we're neck to neck. And I remember him, I, I remember I was just barely just reaching over him, and I beat him. And, uh, I, at the time, I, I wasn't very competitive at the time. I just, I just wanted to swim. And, uh, I remember I was leaving the swim meet, and outside in the, uh, parking lot, there was a mom yelling at a kid and saying, "How can you lose to a kid with one arm and no legs?"
Gabe continued swimming at Gunnersville High School, where he won Alabama state championships in the fifty and one-hundred meter freestyle, and became an inspiration for his peers and the community.
He has inspired other special needs kids to swim. I think there's more and more now swimming at the high school level on the high school team, which is awesome.
From talking with him, I know he has moments where he, he feels down, and he, he's hard on himself, and he wants, you know, the most out of everything he does. But just seeing his passion and him push himself and, and overcome obstacles and overcome life, it's just been amazing.
They just, uh, somebody who motivates everybody. Um, just somebody's incredible to be around, always a positive attitude, always, uh, looking for an opportunity to, to show God's grace through him and his actions. Um, so, you know, every time you saw him run the swim team, it, it was the, that, that role kinda, it came to light very easily that they looked at him as, as somebody, not only as a teammate, but somebody who, who showed them that there is, uh, an incredible gift that he has.
Yeah, that's, that's really my main ambition, is to become a great swimmer and to become a great man, to become a great man in God.
I don't think he's trying to be anybody's hero. He's just living. He's just doing his thing. Just his attitude and his zest for life, and, and, uh, it's wonderful that he's wanting to, to, uh, you know, share his life with others.
So Gabe has taught me that the only limits that we have are usually the ones that we put on ourselves. And, uh, it's, uh, he's changed my life for sure. And inspired me. And, uh, somebody that doesn't all necessarily ask for help, that wants to be in a position to always help others.
This award, it really just shows that the people in my life who, um, saw potential in me, people who, uh, spent their time on me, the people who, uh, mentored me, who trained me to be the best person I could be, this award's not just for me. First, it's for God, and it's second for my people. It's for my home, my family, my friends. It's for Gunnersville. I just hope that I make the people who've spent their time on me proud. That's, that's all I hope for. That's all I've been to do for my whole life, is to make people proud, make people happy, and, uh, sacrifice everything I have for people.
After graduating in 2022, Gabe hopes to continue to motivate others and has aspirations of swimming for the US Paralympic team. Gabe Marsh, the 2023 recipient of the NFHS Spirit of Sport Award.
Ms. Manning is District Six. Well, y'all sit down back for a minute. Go ahead, Gabe, speak. But I, I do wanna let Attorney General Marshall's with us. Uh, that's a great picture, Mr. Attorney General, and, uh, I know he's a lifelong friend of the family. Uh, but our board member for District Six is Maureen Manning, so I'm gonna let Ms. Manning give Gabe his award, and then let Gabe say a few words, and, uh, Mr. Marshall and anybody else who wants to up here. It's a great day to celebrate. A fine, handsome young man. Thanks for being with us today.
And that he is, and of course, I grew up in the surrounding area of Gunnersville, and I knew about Gabe from reading the newspapers up there. So he impressed me before today, but today, and after watching that video, what a man. Really, what a man. So it is a great pleasure that this board of education presents this resolution to be honoring you as the recipient of the National High School Spirit of Sports Award.
I didn't really know much about this award. Um, I didn't know about, much about it until like next week, last week. And, um, yeah, uh, how the video says, I did everything for Gunnersville. And, um, so, uh, hearing about this, and hearing about being honored with this award, I didn't know I was doing this for Alabama too, and I, and I'm, I'm very proud to be born in Alabama. And, uh, the little voting thing y'all did, like adopted me or something like that. I mean, it's very ironic that I was adopted to a family of, that lived in Alabama, and then I didn't really notice that I was actually adopted to Alabama. And I just wanna thank y'all for, uh, for accepting me and giving me this award. I'm, I'm very, I'm very happy about this, actually. Just thank y'all. I'm, I'm very, I'm very happy about this, actually, just thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Um, y'all saw a picture of Gabe and I, you probably didn't recognize me because there was a lot less gray hair, um, when Gabe and I were on the stage, and I'll never forget, Gabe gave the initial speech, and he said, "My name is Gabe Marsh, and God made me special." Uh, that's the moment I learned from a fourth grader, and Gabe has been an inspiration, you know, it's a privilege to be the Attorney General of Alabama, it's a greater privilege to be a friend of Gabe Marsh, and so, so proud of him, and, and look, the video also revealed Gabe was adopted into an amazing family, uh, and, and what she has done, not only with Gabe, but all of his siblings, has been nothing short of phenomenal, and they represent everything that is wonderful about our state, and so what I'm excited about is to see what's next. You know, Gabe shared with me his vision, uh, which is, uh, to be able to go into ministry, and I know that's something he's very passionate about, but one thing that I can absolutely guarantee you, Gabe, and everybody in this room, I think would validate that, as you say, you just wanna make people proud of you, you've done that, and you will continue to do that, being the man that you are. You know, he's up there in fourth grade, I accuse him of being a ladies' man, having seen that picture of him wearing the tux, man, you have fulfilled that prophecy, so beware, Alabama, he's, he's there and he's coming, so, Gabe, love you, brother.
Appreciate that, and I do wanna say a special thanks to the Attorney General, 'cause he's, he is supposed to be somewhere else, um, and I'm sure it's very important, I'm, I'm not saying that tongue-in-cheek, I'm sure it really is very important, and, um, when we contacted him, I understand he said, "That court, that lawyer, group of lawyers, they can wait, I'm gonna go be there with Gabe Marsh," and I thank you, and it says a lot about your character, appreciate the job you're doing. I would like to, I know, Ms. West, it's, you're in charge, and we have to adjourn the meeting, but I'd like to leave them all here and bring the rest of the board down to do a picture together, if that'd be okay. Uh, I have nothing else to report today. Y'all wanna go ahead and vote?
I'll adjourn this meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. All in favor, please say aye. We adjourn.